Okay. It is 6:00 PM. This meeting will now come to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. City Councilwoman Thompson will lead us in the legislative prayer today.
Lord Heavenly Father, we thank you for bringing us all here who are present today to join in this meeting. We thank you for the opportunity to serve you, to serve this wonderful city of Palm Valley. We ask for special blessings and prayers to those who have been affected by storm Nicos. We pray that you will guide us as we journey through the next forge forward with the decisions for the city of Palm Valley. In your sweet Jesus' name, I pray, amen.
Thank you, Councilwoman Thompson. Thank you all you guys for showing up today. This is a very important meeting for our city, for all those in on Zoom as well. More importantly, this week is Constitution Week. So every year we have the honor, have the ladies from the D R here with us, and they always come this, this one week prior to our budget meeting. And we, we do our proclamation for Constitution Week. So Dawn Taffey, can you guys come up? And because of little safety, I'm not going to join you guys today as I usually do. I'm sorry, but we're going to do this remotely, I guess, or safely. Socially distance is the right word. That's correct. So with that said, again, Constitution Week, it's so important even as, as these times that we are, are having now, people need to remember what, what we need to follow, and that's, that's our constitution. Right behind this particular document. So please stay strong. We need more than ever now. So anyway, proclamation, Constitution Week. Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties embodies the principles of limited government in a republic dedicated to rule by law. And whereas September 17th, 2022 marks the 234th anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent, magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebration which will commemorate it. And whereas public law, 9/15 guarantees the issuance of the proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I George Rivera, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the city of Palm Valley, Texas, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through the 23rd, 2021 as Constitution Week and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protesting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties. In witness thereof, I here to set my hand and cause the seal of the city to be affixed the 17th day of September of the year of our Lord 2021. Oh, that is great. Look at this. Everybody got one?
Yeah.
I really have one. Thank you, ladies. Thank you, ladies. Yes. Absolutely. Love it. Thank you, ladies. Hope we'll see you again soon and that will for sure next year, but maybe we'll see each other again soon. Thank you so much. Have a good evening. Okay. Next item on our agenda is item number five, public comments. Now I want to suggest to the audience that if your public comment relates to the proposed tax rate or the proposed budget to hold your comments until we have the public hearing, which will be an open forum at that time. So any public comments that do not relate to the tax rate or proposed budget.
I don't have anyone signed up here.
No, not even see no hands up or anything on Zoom. So let's go ahead and move on and go to item number six, and that's discussion and possible action to approve the minutes of the special meeting of August 17th, 2021 and special meeting of August 31st, 2021. Counsel, I did not see any major issues, but then I don't check for typos. So with that said, Councilwoman Taylor, do we have any?
Well, it may have been suggested to me that was picky with my OCD when I was because so I'm going to say that I don't see any of a material or substantial nature that needs to be changed in the minutes. And they are fine and accurately reflect what happened.
Was that a motion?
So moved that they be
I second. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Councilwoman Taylor. Item number seven, public hearing to hear comments for or against the proposed tax rate, which is the same that's been for the past couple of years of point 515463 per $100 valuation. I now declare this public hearing open. It is 6:08. So is there any comments or any comments for the proposed tax rate of point 515463, which has been the same for the past three years, I believe.
So you're not raising the tax rate?
No.
You're keeping it the same?
That is correct.
So I misunderstood. I thought you were raising it.
No.
And then I thought, no, I looked back at the past three years and it was the same.
Yes, ma'am.
But when I got my Cameron County, I was just looking at all the, the the taxes and the amounts and all that. And so what is the, there's nothing under the Palm Valley Utility District tax?
We don't have a utility district, ma'am?
Why is it there?
I, we used to have one many, 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 many years ago, but that has been.
I think it reflects the zero.
It should be zero. There should be no tax rate.
I just wondered why that was there.
I'm not sure why it's still there and shouldn't be on there since that entity does not exist anymore. It's been a long, long time, way before my time.
The county needs to.
Yeah, that's something. That's on the appraisal district. The way their system set up is, I think that was dissolved back in the 2000s or. Yeah, I, I'm, I'll, I'll take that note and I will address that with Cameron County. But no, that, that entity was dissolved. I don't know. 95? 1995? It's been a long time.
It's a little never. No, because that was a renewal. 20 years, 20 years.
2005?
That would have been, that's why.
So what's, what's the the honor of utility? I thought that was the utility, Palm Valley utility.
Well, the only fee that's on, that's on your, your new fee then is the drainage fee that we are going to, or that we have imposed on each resident. You start our drainage projects here the next year or so. But that's what that is. But that's coming from the city. That's not the drainage district or anything like that. Or no, we have our own entity now. The city is, is billing you for $24 a month so we could start our drainage projects that we have identified three year, those three projects that we're going to get started here soon.
Palm Valley.
Yes, city of Palm Valley. That is correct. That is correct. Oh, yes. That was a long time ago. Council. We adopted an ordinance a year ago. Any other questions or comments on the tax rate? Just to give you guys on the tax rate, it's the same tax rate as the year before and the, and the previous year. There's no increase on taxes. As now, no increase on the tax rate. I'll just make sure that you understand that no increase on the tax rate. However, the taxable value of each house was raised by Cameron County Appraisal District by an average of 2.46%. Average homestead taxable value in 2020 was 185,659. In 2021, now it's 190,223. The tax on an average homestead, again, the increase was about 2.46%. In 2020, the average tax on a home was $957. This year it's 980.53. So the total tax levy on all properties, our income was raised by about 4.58%. Last year, 2020, we had an income on the property tax levy of 624,524. This year we are going to receive 653,115 all because of the taxable value of the appraisal district raised on all our properties here in Palm Valley. Any questions or comments on the tax, on the proposed tax rate?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion on agenda item A to adopt an ordinance setting the tax rate at point 515463 for each hundred.
Eric, we're not there yet. We're still on the, on the public hearing. We'll, we'll jump over to eight, and we have a question here on the floor ahead of that.
So I, I was wondering, I mean, do you vote on that each year? Is that, so it has to come out each year that you'll keep it at that rate?
The tax rate, the tax rate, we, the council has a workshop, a budget workshop. This year we had it on the 28th of August. Saturday mornings, we gather here with pens and pencil and paper and look at the budget and see where if we need some additional income to operate our city. In this particular case, you're going to see in our budget that we didn't need to increase taxes. We had enough in our, in our income to keep the services that you are accustomed to. So the council decided not to raise a tax to leave it alone. And they have done that for the past three years.
Okay, so it comes out that you could call Cameron County and say, hey, come over and reassess our property?
You can as a property owner. The city can't, but the property owners can, and a lot of, a lot of property owners do contest the value of their homes. I for one, I couldn't because the three houses sold around me sold for a lot more than what my house is appraised for, so I don't have an argument. But some people do, and they have, and they will.
But would the city call?
No, the city cannot call. Property owner.
No, not to protest, but just to suggest that maybe they need to come out and reevaluate all of our.
No, no, the city does not get involved in anything like that. No, the property, property owner is responsible to discuss their own property evaluations with Cameron County Appraisal District.
No one wants them to raise.
Of course not. Of course not. They all got raised.
To answer your general question, and yet we, we vote on the tax rate every year.
Whether we keep it or raise it.
Yes.
Yes.
Just in that way, because we have gone through that. Doug personally, several years ago, himself went to Cameron County to contest the evaluation of our property. So we didn't go through the city at that time to do that. Yeah, we just, we just, every individual has a responsibility for the right to, to do that on their own. But as a city, we.
No, I was saying the other, like the cities suggested the county, hey, maybe we need to come out here and raise its property values if that, because that would be one way of increasing tax revenue. So that, that's what I was saying. No, I didn't like to protest my taxes.
Yes, you do.
But then increase a lot of it.
The property value increased, and that's why our property value now is for the entire city of Palm Valley is 126,220,613. I'm not sure what that increase was from last year, but you do the math, it's a 2.4%, 2.46% increase in property value. So taxable value.
Pretty much every resident that's a property owner sitting in this room.
Taxes went up an average of 2.46, some higher, some lower.
Does the county generally each year apprise homes again?
Absolutely, every year.
Every year.
Every year, they actually send teams out to do rental assessments. I believe they also look at our permits. So there's a lot of permits. They want to see any improvements are done to the house. Sometimes they'll come and put a little note on your door saying, can we have access to see those improvements? And you don't have to give them access. You don't have to let them in your house. They will come after you. They'll, they'll try one way or another to raise your taxes. Now, to answer your question, does the city actually try to circumvent raising taxes by calling the county and saying, raise our taxes and we'll assess it? No, we do not do that.
Yeah.
No, we do not do that. And as realtors, we see these houses going for a lot more right now because, I mean, the, the property values are going up. The county sees that, and they try to take advantage of that. It's not something we want to happen. They do it themselves because it behooves them to try to get more money for the entire county, not just for Palm Valley. So that's what's happening.
Yeah, I don't know how much of that the raises do you think contribute? Well, I know that is tremendous inflation of building products several months. And I've heard that that's supposed to go back down. I can't suppose that it could come back here and lower.
Yeah, I'm not an economist, but it will come down, but it's not going to go back to what it was before. It's just like the price of gas. It went up to $4 and it bounced down to like 3, 250, it was 25 right now. And then you feel comfortable. You feel all warm and fuzzy about it. You know, the price came down, but it's didn't go back to what it was originally. So everything's going to happen like, everything's going to come down a little bit, but not all the way.
I've had property in, in, in Cameron County for 30 years, and some years it goes up, some years it goes down. It just depends on you, you know, on what's going on.
Any other comments or or statements on the proposed tax rate? Not hearing any. I now declare this public hearing for the proposed tax rate closed in 6:20. Now, item number eight, discussion and possible action to adopt an ordinance, setting the tax rate of 5.515463.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion on agenda item A to adopt an ordinance setting the tax rate at 515463.
We have the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye. And any opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Item number nine, public hearing to hear comments for or against the proposed budget for the city of Palm Valley for fiscal year 2021, 2022. I now declare this public hearing open, 6:21. Proposed budget this year. Some of the highlights, ladies and gentlemen, we have tax revenue, so we discussed this earlier, 650,600. Estimated sales tax revenue, about 125,000. Estimated other revenue, 72,900. Estimated franchise fee revenue at 56,500. Total projected revenue for the next fiscal year is $905,000. Estimated expenses, public safety, 341,700. Administration expense, 319,900. Estimated streets and infrastructure, 184,000. Estimated court expense, 33,600. Total projected expense, 879,200, which will leave us a projected surplus of 25,800. This is why we decided that we did not need to raise taxes because we had enough on, on the income to maintain our city the way we are accustomed to. The, the budget, the revenue from the property taxes was, is raised by an amount of 4.58%. That is from the property valuations going up. So our revenue is, is a little higher because of the, the and $10,914 is new revenue to that, from new property added to the tax roll this year. In our city water operating budget, we have a total projected revenue of 753,221. We have a, a total of projected expense of 752,321, which has given us an estimated surplus of $900. Going to be very close in our water operating budget, but that, that's what it is. We have a couple of capital spending items that we're going to do in the new fiscal year. We're going to buy a new police unit at $40,000. We're going to buy a new public works truck, and we're going to buy a new mower for $42,000. And we're going to redo our parking lot here at City Hall at $25,000. Cities cash on hand as of August 31st, 2021. Our operating fund has 305,612. Our water department operating fund has 335,444. Our city's emergency fund is 187,681. Water Department Emergency Fund is $100,605. Our infrastructure special fund is $1,023,631. And our infrastructure fund street has 107,559. So this budget allows us to maintain the level of services we have been accustomed to, such as continue providing a 24/7 level of police and fire protection, continued maintenance programs on our wastewater and water system plants, and of course, the enhanced desirability of our community through continued finer improvements of improved aesthetics. So with that said, is there any comments or concerns about our proposed budget for 2021, 22?
Is that on the website?
It will be.
It will be.
After we approve it today. And it'll be at your home probably by end of week. This, this whole thing will be in your home. Any comments or concerns about the budget? Not hearing any. I guess I now am going to close this public hearing at 6:26. And we are going to move to item number 10, discussion and possible action to adopt an ordinance, adopting the budget for the city of Palm Valley for fiscal year 2021, 2022.
So move.
I need a second. Second. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Budget is approved. Thank you very much, counsel. Item number 11, discussion and possible action to renew the emergency medical services and ambulance, ambulance transfer contract between the city of Palm Valley and South Texas Emergency Care Foundation for October 2021 through September 2026. Do we have, is he on?
Yes. The last.
I see.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. How are you doing, sir?
Doing well. How are you, Mr. Aston?
You know, it's been an unprecedented 18 months for all of us, and I hope everyone is doing well. We're doing, we're doing okay, sir.
Any, any comments, anything that we need to look at? You okay?
Yes, Sir Mayor, this, I don't know if Mr. Jones is in the audience. I can't tell from both you.
You know, you know, I, I invited, I invited Councilman Joe Jones to the big boy table, and he refused. He says, that's okay. He, he had enough of the big boy table. He's in the corner like he's punished, but he's not punished. But yes, Council, Councilman Joe Jones is, is present.
He honored us. If he would like to make any introductory remark, however you would like to handle this, Mayor. The contract is for five years. It's identical to the last contract, contract. The only changes were dates. I believe Randy cleaned up a little language. And we added one item in here on item 11. We have always carried all of our communities as additional insured to protect the communities on our liability and insurance coverage policies. It has just previously never been in the contract. We thought this year, we've done it for, well, I've been here 35 years. We've done it each year since then. So why not just go ahead and put it in the contract? So that's item number 11. That was the only change, sir. Mr. Jones, any comment, sir?
I hear you, Neil. You're, you're the expert, sir.
So we bring this to you for your consideration, and in, I'll answer any questions you may have, sir.
I, I don't know if our city attorney has reviewed the contract, but it's identical. So I, I don't have any questions, counsel, unless you do.
Am I understanding that including them in the cities? Can, can you hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
So just that item number 11. So just for clarification, we're extending the coverage for the city as an additional insurer, insured under your policy or the city's policy?
No, it's under our various coverages we have. We've always done that to protect all of our cities and hospitals and other entities.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
Certainly. Oh, just as a side issue, I did go back and look at the stats last year. We ran, I believe, 112 calls in Palm Valley. That's about one every three days. Of those, this, one of the strike teams from the state task force that we requested and had brought in to assist us during that, that peak surge last summer, ran five of those calls. So I believe we did 108, 109, and I believe the total was around 112. So about once each three days. And I believe the total was around a hundred and twelve. So about once each three days.
Well.
I have a question. Uh, also one here. Um, so with the situation being as it is. Where? Are y'all able to take the patients? For treatment?
Yes, ma'am. All of the hospitals, uh, we've seen some, some, it's very good question, very, very good question. We answered that numerous times today. All of the hospitals are receiving patients. Uh, we have had times when every hospital in the valley was on diversion. Uh, under rules. And when one hospital goes on diversion, then, for example, in Harlingen, if both hospital goes on diversion. Uh, then no one's on diversion. Uh, and diversion is simply a courtesy request to not bring patients here. Uh, but, uh, if the patient wants to go there, we're taking the patient there. Now. The downside of that is that sometimes, as, as you're all aware, and it's, it's a worldwide problem. Is that sometimes the EMS crews are having to. Uh, attend to that patient in the back of the ambulance for. Uh, well, in, in McAllen, there was one that they were in the ambulance for thirteen hours. Uh, and, uh, we've had five and six hour wait times. Uh, which is, it's because the hospitals are so short staffed. With a shortage of nursing. Uh, we were a thousand registered nurses short in the Rio Grande Valley before the COVID pandemic hit. Uh, I can tell you. That, uh, there's also shortages of paramedics. And DMTs, and part of the reason for that. Is that the schools closed last year and did not graduate any new paramedics and DMTs. So it's, it's been very challenging. But we are very fortunate. We are, we are full staffed. And we've been able to maintain the person, uh, keep our personnel. Uh, but it's, it's been rough because some of these agencies that are recruiting EMS personnel and nurses have really. Uh, stripped out the hospitals and, and some EMS agencies. So we're still taking the patients to the hospital that they would need to go to. And if it's a major trauma or a stroke, we're still taking them to the comprehensive stroke center and the trauma centers. And those patients are moved ahead, of course, because of their condition.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that said, counsel, any other, um, any other questions, concerns?
Ready to make a motion?
I'm ready. I'd like to make a motion to, uh, approve the renewal of the emergency medical services contract. Uh, between the city of Palm Valley and South Texas Emergency Care Foundation. I need a, I need a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Austin, I, I'll tell you, I, uh, I, I don't like seeing your, your emergency vehicles here in my city, but I am sure glad that they are here. Uh, I don't like seeing them especially late because I know that something happened to one of my citizens. Uh, but I am very, very happy that you guys are here and, and thank you for taking care of us.
Well, thank you, sir. We work for you. And all the citizens, and we want to take care of our citizens. And thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Okay, I, I'm number twelve. Is discussion and possible action to approve a resolution. Appointing a nominee to serve into hold position of nine on the Cameron. County appraisal district board of directors, something that this young man was talking about, that, uh, we're appointing another, the. Same guy. Quite frankly, I, I'm not very impressed with this Mr. Morado guy, but there's no other choices, but I think. Uh, Lisa Jason, you told me that you guys know him.
Yes.
Apparently he's a nice guy, but I've never met this man.
He's retired, yeah.
Is he?
Yes.
He was known as a very, um, ethical, knowledgeable.
He was a professional man.
Yeah. It goes back, it goes back to the concerns that citizens have. I mean, how do we, how do we control this property valuation? Who, who can? To, uh. That, to express our concerns. Uh, I sure like to meet this guy. If, uh, just to find out who he is and what has he done to protect our, our property values. So with that said, I mean, I, I, that's all the comment that I want to say. Uh, I know. Uh, you guys, uh, own and, and.
He's a resident?
No, he's not a resident of Palm Valley, and that's, that's kind of concerning as well. I'm not sure. I, yeah, I don't know which one of these guys represents small cities, and, and that's, that's concerning to me. Uh, so. With that said, I mean, there is nobody else that we could nominate, I don't think. It's not giving us an option. I guess we could put somebody's name on here. But that doesn't mean he's going to get, uh, voted in. So.
And like, like Jason said, it's supposedly an autonomous. Mini. Um. So I mean, as far as, you know, talking to him about concerns and all that, I mean, it's supposed to be. You know, neutral.
Yeah. Interesting.
The individual represents, is supposed to represent the city.
It's supposed to represent the city, right?
Not necessarily. The citizens, which doesn't necessarily. Uh, always jive on how much the appraised values. Where the houses should be, taxes ultimately are assessed based on that.
Gotcha. All right.
Do they have a certain amount of meetings per year or?
Uh, I, I, I am not sure what the meetings are like or when. Uh, I've never been invited. So I don't know. I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna have to look into this and see how I could be a part of the, at least.
This is a unpaid, unpaid position.
I'm not sure. I don't know. You guys know?
I don't know.
Do you know if it's a paid position? You know, I, I, I think it is, to be honest with you. I really do think it is.
A meeting clear.
So. Okay, um. Please do. That'd be great.
This is definitely a person that represents cities. Because, um. They would be ineligible if they had represented citizens, property owners. In the appraisal process, you know, the contest and so forth proceeding through years.
Yeah.
So very clearly, this is an advocate for the city.
Well, my concern is. That I've been, I've been a mayor for six years here, and I've never met a man, I've never met the man. I've never been invited. I've never been given any, any, uh. Uh, or asked if I had any concerns or had any issues with my city. Counsel, Councilman Jones, I want to break protocol here. Do you, you, do you remember seeing anybody come and asking any, any of us? Uh, while you were councilman back in the day and, and, uh. So I, I, I have some concerns. So Councilwoman Taylor, if you could. Ask Mr. Morado to. Call me or visit us. I'll be, I'll be glad. I'll be glad to listen, come and want our meetings. But that has nothing to do with the motion, guys. So I mean, I, I need to follow the. Yes. So with that said, uh, gentlemen, we, uh, we need to, uh.
Is there a deadline on this?
Can we table it? Well, we need to, we, we. We, yeah, we have to do it now. Oh, we have to do it now. We can nominate somebody. I think, I think I asked that question last year. Who can we nominate? Nobody, and we can, we didn't come up with anybody.
Well, we also did enough with the telephone.
Yeah.
You know, just before we went out. And they might have been here.
We didn't ask anybody because.
If they were here, they would know. So we have all these nominees, some of it's not here, so they can't say no.
We didn't, and we didn't have enough information as far as what, what it entails.
Yeah.
So that's why we ended up not nominating. So here we are again a year later.
John's here, so we can't nominate.
Yeah.
What's his fellow's name? I'm gonna nominate him.
Ricardo Morado.
I, 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 I make a motion that we, uh, that we, uh, that I recall them, what I just, sir. What I, what I. So, so.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? We got. Okay, so Eric, I need to know whether you're aye or nay. Eric?
Hi, Eric.
Can you hear me, Eric?
I. I said aye.
Aye, okay.
Aye. Aye in favor.
Aye in favor. Okay, we got three favors to abstain.
I abstain. So we, I abstain.
I'm sorry, you abstained?
Yes, ma'am.
Abstain, abstain.
Abstained.
Abstain. So we got three, so motion. Motion passes. Okay, uh, item number thirteen, discussion and possible action to approve fire services contract between the city of Harlingen. Fire department and the city of Palm Valley. Okay, with that said, as you know, uh, city of, of, uh. Harlingen Fire Department charges us ten cents. Per evaluation, so this year went up, so now we're going to pay. Uh, a hundred and twenty six thousand dollars. Uh, versus what we were paying, I think, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars last year. So with that said, we're going to have to increase those fire fees. Uh, to every city, every person. Uh, every resident. So, uh, that's, that's coming, so.
Not that, um. It would affect. My voting to have fire protection for the city, but I'm curious to know in the last fiscal year, since it's COVID again. How many times have they actually been called out?
How many times have they actually been called out in the last fiscal year that we paid them a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for? So between, for the fiscal year twenty twenty to twenty twenty one, how many calls do we know?
Maybe not, not more than four, because they do send us quarterly reports. We do get those reports. And so I've been like maybe three. And maybe one of those will be a false alarm. So they're not like really. You know, like serious fires, fires.
And most of the calls are either fire alarm or, uh, once in a while, uh. They do respond to the event, but that's rare. Uh, but they have come, uh, since their change in fire chief. But it's mostly fire alarm. Uh, I believe one time they came on an accident. I don't remember who it was. This, this was where the previous, we are in traffic accident. Uh, but it's usually for, uh, uh, fire. And we don't call for reasons.
I've also seen, uh. Flickering around with the different fire hydrants. I guess they're making sure if they still work or. Yeah, so they, there's.
Shindo, Shindo, isn't that you saying you're doing that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I've seen him parked next to my house and they out there messing with it and they flood my yard. Thank you for the water. And then they cap it and take off and. I'm unhappy about that.
Yeah, the fire department makes sure that the pressure is, is, uh, is what they require. That's what they do.
Watering my yard.
Well, we need fire protection, but.
It's, there is no, there is no, uh, alternative to Harlingen fire protection. And quite frankly, the meetings that we had. Uh, the meetings, I'll hold on for a second. I'll be right back. The means that we had with, with, uh, uh. Mayor Boswell and fire chief. Uh. The ten cents, which is the max that they could bill us. Uh, by state law. If it wasn't for that state law, they would be billing us a heck of a lot more. Uh. Because they could, but they can't. So they're, they're capped at the ten cents. Uh, we tried to reduce it, but they're not going to reduce it. They won't. They, they will. As a matter of fact, if they had an opportunity. They'll raise it, but because of state law, they can't. So we're capped at the ten cents. Go ahead, uh, Eric, I'm sorry.
I, um, I just want to put on record, this was something that, uh. I had an issue with last year at a hundred and twenty five thousand or whatever it was at. We had four calls. Three were fire alarm. Calls, false calls. This year, we've had zero. We're taxed based on, uh, valuation. Which is unfair. Because our homes are nicer, they're better built, they're newer, they have better protection. Than other communities. I mean, there's gotta be a solution to this, and I've discussed with the mayor, a couple of possibilities. But we spent a quarter million dollars. And had one air call in two years. Simple math.
Yeah, well, I, I don't know of an alternative, Eric. I know LaFerrari is down the road, but. What is that gonna do to every property's, uh, insurance? Uh, so you have to out, you have to weigh that as well?
No. I, uh, understand, mayor, I'm not criticizing. I'm just saying a quarter million dollar for one. Uh, fire truck arriving at a residence in two years is crazy. I'm, I'm thinking of buying a fire truck.
Yeah.
Well, if you do, let us know and we, we might.
Might hire you. I'll just, I'll just put lights on top of the bottle cap truck.
There you go.
By the way, vodka fuels a fire, Eric, just FYI.
All right. With that said, any other questions, uh, concerns, counsel? There is no other game in town, unfortunately. I, I need more motion. Uh, we have a motion to approve the fire services contract. We have a second. All in favor say aye.
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 All motion carries. So item number fourteen, consent agenda.
Did Eric vote for?
Four, he voted for, yes. He's got a little delay. Consent agenda, item number fourteen, any questions, concerns on the consent agenda? I will add on to, to the last, uh, item of the fire department. Uh, we are going to have to raise the fees of the fire department on, on our water bill. Uh, there's some issues with the multifamilies, so we're gonna have to have some discussions with them as well, so. Be prepared for next, uh, council meeting. To discuss the fees for multifamily. Luckily, commercial accounts are okay. Uh, but we're still gonna increase those guys, but, uh. The residents for sure are gonna raise, but the multifamily is gonna get hit pretty hard. Just FYI.
You're referring to the drainage project?
No, I'm referring to the fire protection service.
This is, we're not building a property. And essentially it's for a six thousand dollar increase, right? We went from one twenty to one.
That is correct. We, we're gonna increase our expenses increased by about six thousand dollars, uh, from, from last year's. So we gotta recoup that six thousand. We don't want to make any money off of this. We just want to just break even at best. Okay, so I know we're paying thirteen dollars and ten cents right now, but we're gonna pay a little bit more. But again, the multifamilies also are paying thirteen dollars and ten cents. So that's not, that's not fair. So we gotta fix that. Okay, gotta fix that. Commercial properties are getting way build a lot more. Ten times more than what we're paying. So we're, the commercial properties are fine. But, uh. Nah, multifamilies are, uh, we need to, we need to review that. Anyway. Just wanted to bring that up in consent agenda. It wasn't on the, uh, the, the agenda. So just want to give you a heads up in October. We might have some discussions on that. I don't have anything else on the consent agenda for you guys to see. Uh, unless you guys want to talk about it, I already gave you the numbers of where we are. So I will tell you, uh, we did receive our, our, uh. First wave of, of money from this, uh. American Rescue Plan or whatever the heck that's called. So we do have a hundred and fifty three thousand. Blah, 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 blah. Uh, I, we put it in the water, uh. Account. Uh, because remember that particular American Rescue Plan allows us to work on. Uh, surface stormwater drainage. Uh, and that's what counsel, I'm gonna ask you guys to do next month. Is to allow us to use that money for that. So. Again, we just put it away for now. We can't do anything until we get together and discuss this, uh, in October, so. Be prepared, be prepared for that as well. So on that.
I, I have one question for the chief. I know it's just September, but we have, uh, next month, uh, we'll have a council meeting and, and, uh. Halloween is gonna be upon us again. Uh, last year, we were kind of in a quandary as to what to do because of COVID and all that and. And, um, I was just wondering.
And, um, I was just wondering if, uh, y'all were in the works of, of a plan on. How we're gonna handle it this year, and, and I'm not asking what the plan is, just in September and. And, uh, can we be thinking, uh, about what we're gonna do this, this coming year, this coming, uh, Halloween? So we have a little bit of time to plan.
Yeah, uh, we, we planned last year the same as the year before, we didn't know what to expect last year. Uh, this year, I'm planning on the same thing as, uh, two years ago, uh, it's on a Sunday this year, and so. On the weekends, we get a different crowd than, than we do on the weekdays, and, uh, the thing is this past year. Uh, you know, COVID is bad, but it was on Saturday, and it was, there were some people, but it wasn't nothing compared to previous.
Right.
Uh, last year, but, uh, but for this year, we're, we're gonna find like a regular Halloween, uh, everybody going back to normal, moving back to normal or. You know, everybody seems to be back to normal, so, um, I, I, I would expect that we could have probably have a pretty good track. And so we, we'd be doing the same thing we do at the, as we can have out here, uh, patrolling. Um, we would probably close off certain entrances, uh, the main one, the veto, we closed that one off of the work on police. And, uh, and then we'll do some other modifications from the traffic.
And have as many officers on duty as we can.
I, I come out, doesn't matter who stays, and then of course, the guys that are on duty, and I'll have extras come in, so there's usually six, eight of us at least. And, uh, we got four units, so we move on, we borrow Chendo's truck, and, you know, hopefully by then we have a new truck.
I was just gonna ask about that, that might be a good time to break up, polish off those bicycles. And apparently a new mower.
Yeah, a new mower too, yeah, you know what, you know what, the mayor could use the mower, uh, the mayor could use a mower. There you go, the lights, yeah, make sure it has lights, tend them, hey, that brings up a great, uh, uh, agenda item. Cynthia for October, so, sorry, uh, so let's put an agenda and let's, let's bring it up to council. If there's any restrictions for Halloween, I, I would, I would think not, but let's just do an official. Discussion and possible action on Halloween, had the council say. No restrictions or some restrictions or whatever the case may be, let's, let's do that.
And we don't know if the county judge.
Concerned about the county judge. Well, it's okay, he's also part of the state and he does things against the state, so anyway. Long since, that gets to another subject, so that's not, uh, not a good thing, so, uh, anything else on the consent agenda? Not hearing anything?
The consent agenda.
I need a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Before we, uh, bring this, uh, item to, to Eric, the next item. Uh, Chendo chief, as you know, you guys got some vehicles coming in, so let's start looking into that right away, let's start sending ours. Right away, please, let's get rid of, uh, quicker than we get the new ones, so, so. Don't wanna have a whole fleet out here, okay, so let's get rid of them, and then let's get the new ones in, please, 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 please. With that said, Eric?
It, it's my great honor to make a motion to end this city, this beautiful city of Palm Valley's meeting.
I need a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same side, motion carries, thank you guys very much.